Let's see. So for all of those that are following the agenda, we're going to go to discussion item one. I will open up the public hearing. This is a hearing on the 2021 redistricting process, providing an overview of the redistricting process, review communities of interest, supervisory mapping proposals submitted by the public, provide over and under population data, review the criteria for adopting district maps, receive input from the public and receive direction from the Board of Supervisors. And we have our former county administrator, who is helping us with the redistricting process. Mr. Tua, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to all the supervisors. I've removed my mask for the purpose of this only because, number one, you probably wouldn't be able to hear me. But number two, since I wear glasses, it tends to fog up and so I can't quite see what I'm doing. So hopefully that will be okay. Just some background information for anybody who may not have been at any of our hearings so far. The redistricting is obviously required every 10 years. The board last redistricted back in 2011 and we did it by ordinance at that time. That's an important thing to note because a little later on, we'll be talking about the ability now of the board to actually adopt the redistricting by resolution as opposed to the ordinance process. In Contra Costa County, it is the Board of Supervisors' responsibility for drawing the maps. And it has to be done using the official census data, which was released on September 20th of this year. This is what the current map of the supervisors looks like. And again, this is the one that was adopted back in 2011. At that time, the population of the county was 1,049,000. And in 2020, when the most recent census was completed, the population of the county is now at 1,168,000 and a little change. So but we're about 119,000 greater population than we were back in 2010. Of course, as we all know, the growth in the population in the county was not uniform across all of the districts. And so that brings us to this time period when we will be looking at how the board wants to design the districts. And that requires, of course, the public input. So as I indicated, essentially, there are a number of laws that we have to follow, the federal laws in terms of the Fourteenth Amendment, which is one person, one vote, and of course, the Voting Rights Act, which was passed back in 1965. Additionally, there are a number of requirements under the California Elections Code, as well as a number of statutes that were passed that have amended the Elections Code. The most recent one was SB 594, which was Senator Glazier's bill. This allows the county to adopt the supervisory map by resolution instead of ordinance. And the map becomes official on the day of adoption. That law was signed by Governor Newsom on September 27th. The reason that's important is because we are under a very tight timeline in order to complete the redistricting due to the fact that the official data was not released until a very late date. And essentially, if the board chooses to do it by resolution, that actually saves one meeting because if we do it by ordinance, that requires obviously two readings of the ordinance and would require an additional meeting. So as I said, the mandatory requirements in terms of the California law is that the redistricting must be done by December 15th of 2021. There was an extension of time allowed by the California Supreme Court as it relates to the state commission that is doing redistricting at the state level. But that did not change the deadline for the county. So we are still under the December 15th, 2021 deadline. During that, before that, we have to produce a number of maps. But it requires four public hearings, one before the maps was drawn. And that was the public hearing we had back in August. There are two meetings required once the maps are drawn. And one of them has to be in evening or on a Saturday or Sunday. The other thing, as mentioned by Chair Burgess, the public hearings are at a fixed time regardless of any other agenda items. And so that is why we have moved into this at this particular time. As I indicated, our first redistricting public hearing was on August 10th. On September 20th, we finally received the release of the California State Adjusted Redistricting Data. We had actually received what we refer to as legacy data back towards the end of August. But again, it is the official data that was released on September 20th that it becomes the basis for the county's redistricting. The additional public hearings that we are scheduling after today is we will have the evening meeting required by the statute on October 19th. And that will start at 6:15 PM. Additionally, we are going to have a series of six district workshops hosted by supervisors. And those will be held in the evenings, except there will be one on Saturday during the day, one on Sunday during the day. And then the other ones will be in the evenings. And those will take place between October 23rd and October 28th. Then on November 9th, we will have the fourth public hearing, starting at 9:00 AM. And right now, we are scheduled to have a fifth public hearing scheduled for November 23rd, again, starting at 9:00 AM. All of this, as we indicated, required in order for us to meet that statutory deadline to complete the redistricting. As I indicated, the I can get the right slide up here, right? So we're going to hold additionally individual supervisory workshops. And this is the schedule in detail. All of this is also on our dedicated redistricting website that's available for the public to do a number of items. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. So this is the schedule of those workshops. Additionally, we are doing a number of community online workshops. These are technical workshops that are intended for the public to learn how the online mapping applications work and how they can submit suggestions either for communities of interest or suggestions for supervisory district maps. The first of those was held on September 15th. And the next one will be on October 13th at 4:00 PM. That one will be presented in Spanish. Each of these workshops will be hosted by District R, which is the official district redistricting mapping program that we have made available to the public. The next one would then be on October 14th, and this one will be in English. It will be at 2:00 PM, hosted by District R. It is important to recognize that we are required under the California Fair Maps Act to have a number of ranked priorities. In other words, to the extent possible, or practical, I should say, the supervisor districts have to be geographically contiguous. That is the first ranked priority. The second one, which has been more of interest to many of the public, is the fact that the geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or community of interest has to be respected and to minimize its division. And then the third one of importance is, of course, protecting the geographic integrity of a city or a census designated place. Each of these, with the exception of the fourth one, basically says to the extent practical. And that's important to recognize as we go into this because there are a number of reasons why sometimes a city has to be split. Sometimes a community of interest has to be looked differently for one set of individuals than it does for somebody else. Community of interest, as we said, is the most significant one in terms of it's the second ranked priority, but it is the one that most people are interested in. And it is broadly defined as a population that shares common social or economic interests. This is taken specifically out of the statute. So it's important to recognize that a community of interest can be almost anything, but it has to be identifiable by a specific geographic area. There are a number of principles, as we indicated, that the board adopted back when we had our workshop back in January of this year in terms of whenever possible saying that a community of interest should be held together in a single district and avoid splitting communities. That comes into play as we talk about the issue of, in some cases, why it becomes necessary both from a population equality standard, but also from a community of interest as to why some cities may have to be split as opposed to be kept in whole. There are a number of communities of interest. This might be a little hard to reach, but essentially, it points out that communities of interest can be just about anything you want. It's urban or rural interests. It can be income levels. It can be social interests. It can be parks, dog parks. And I think, as I mentioned last time, for some reason, it doesn't include cat parks. So but I assume that could possibly also be a community of interest. So the population growth, as we talked about it, it is, again, the official census data. And that's the data that was released on September 20th. And it included the incarcerated population relocation numbers. In other words, there are individuals held in state institutions that should be counted in the communities from which they came. And so that number was required to be adjusted to reach the actual population. So when you look in terms of Contra Costa County, the population growth essentially, as you can see, uneven as far as the from deviation, what we call deviation from the mean. Again, the goal is to create districts that are substantially equal in population. But the law recognizes that there are a number of reasons why some deviation in population will occur in order to meet all of the federal and state requirements, including the Fair Maps Act, requirements such as respecting the geographic integrity of a city or of a local community of interest, which again, can be different than the integrity of the city. Because of this, the law specifically allows that there can be a deviation of a plus or minus 5%, and that is generally acceptable as long as other legal requirements are met. So as you look at this chart, what you can see is that the overall deviation from the mean, in other words, if you had an equal population in each district, each district would have 233,613 people. That's very impractical and for a lot of different reasons again, because of the need to meet communities of interest as well as geographic issues surrounding the county. Not the least of which, in our case, of course, is we have a mountain located in the middle of the county. So you look at terms of deviating from the mean, and this gets somewhat confusing to people. But what's important to know is you take the number that is highest, in other words, above the mean, and take the number that is also highest below the mean. So in this case, as you look at it, the current deviation, the highest district was Supervisor District Number Two, which was 4.35% above the mean. And the most lowest one was Supervisor District Number One, which was a minus 3.56%. So you add those two together and you get the total deviation, which in our case, right now, is 7.91. The initial numbers that we received when we used the legacy data showed that the deviation was a little over 8%. But once we got the California data and then distributed 2,137 incarcerated population across the five supervisory districts, that reduced the deviation from eight, a little over 8%, down to 7.91%. It's important to recognize that that is within the allowance by law, again, because it's less than 10%. This means that technically, if the board did absolutely nothing, we would still be in compliance with the federal requirement in terms of within the deviation from the mean. So one of the things that you may have seen in the paper was, at the end of August, there was an article in the San Francisco Chronicle that analyzed the 2020 census data. And again, at that time, they were working off the legacy data and indicated that if you look at the state's demographic makeup, Contra Costa County represents the state overall very well. The article showed that Contra Costa County, out of all of the counties in the state, had the fourth smallest deviation. And that was based on population and the difference from the state. So if you look at that, again, it shows that we are fairly representative of the state in general. So at this point, one of the things that we do want to talk about, though, is obviously the fact that the supervisory districts have become more diverse over the past decade and how that impacts on all of these numbers. And so I'm going to turn this over to Christine Songstein, who is with the Department of DCD. The development and essentially Conservation and Development, thank you. And essentially, it is their office through the GIS that has been having the yeoman's work in terms of going through and looking at the numbers and are responsible for the actual drafting of the maps as we get to it. So she's going to walk through a number of these slides that show us where the supervisory districts stand, as well as taking a look at the community of interest proposals as well as the mapping proposals that we have received to date. So with that, I'll turn them over to Christine.
Thank you, David. I have microphones right now. Hello, Madam Chair and members of the board. This graph right here just shows that the supervisory districts in the county overall has become more diverse over the past decade. The county has a Latino population, and that's Latino of any race, of 27%. White, 39.1%, Black, 8.4%, Asian, 18%, and others, 7.1%. Some other key takeaways would be District One has the highest Latino population. District Two has the highest Asian population. District Three is most like every other, most like the county as a whole, with District Four leading in the other population. And District Five has the most equitable distribution throughout all race and ethnicities.
You didn't point out African-American population. I think District One also has the largest
District One also has the highest African-American population. Thank you, Supervisor Joya. The Fair Maps Act requires that we include citizen voting age population on all of our maps. And I'm just going to go back and forth between the total population and the citizen voting age population a couple of times because you can see there's some substantial differences between
Could you eventually have one chart that puts both of them on too? That would be in the future, that'd be great.
We could work on
That has both numbers on one chart.
Right. Thank you. And so you can see that there's a substantial decrease when you look at the total population and the citizen voting age population. And this is for two reasons. First of all, it's the voting age population, so the total, so it's only adults over the age of 18. And our youth tend to be more diverse than our elders. And also, it's citizen voting age population. So it only constitutes people, it doesn't include any immigrants of any sort. And as you may recall, in the 2020 census, we did not ask the citizenship question. So this information is derived from the American Community Survey data. And then it's provided to us in redistricting format by the statewide redistricting data, the statewide database. Our GIS division will be doing, will take all of this information as well as the data from the statewide database and to create some mapping alternatives. The Fair Maps Act does have, with some exceptions, requires that on that data, as David has indicated, is available, was available on September 20th, 2021. And with some exceptions, we're supposed to wait 21 days after that official data was available. But I think David might have an update.
Thank you, Christine. Yes, one thing to point out, and that is when we receive the September 20th data, counting the 21 days means that we could not produce any county-drawn maps as opposed to citizen-drawn maps until October 12th of this year. However, looking at the statute, what we also noted that although the state extended the timeline for the state redistricting from December 15th to, they extended it by 12 days to December 27th, that did not change our drop dead date, which was December 15th. So then, if you look at the statute, it specifically provides that if, in fact, the timeline for adoption is less than 90 days, then the timeline or the ability for us to draft maps is then reduced to seven days. So that means that the actual timeline that would prevent the county from drafting any maps has already expired. So it's possible that we could go right now and actually start drafting maps. But we are currently scheduled to keep with the information that we have and make the first draft maps based upon direction we hopefully receive from the board today at the October 19th public hearing. That's the one, again, that'll be in the evening, starting at 6:15. So it's a little confusing, but basically, we think we're best to continue along the timeline that we currently have. I'll turn it back to Christine.
Thank you. This next slide shows the template for all the future map concepts that we will be providing. This one, of course, is just our current 2011 supervisory districts. I just wanted to take a quick moment to go over some of the key components. Of course, the largest of which is the map. Each supervisory district is laid out in their own color and labeled. Then there's the CVAP information. And if you'll notice, on the far left, there's a county citizen age voting population that has the background of gray, and that will be there on every map. And then the calculations for the CVAP will be provided for each concept. Along the bottom, there's some key demographic or key information. The total variance, all the way at the left, along with some key information like the population and equal distribution that David had just talked about, population by district and the variance and percentage in the graph reflecting that variance. And then finally, every map will have the current supervisory districts as a reference.
Christine, before you move off this chart?
Sure.
Madam Chair, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
So is there a way, on the right, you're only showing citizen voting age population by race and ethnicity. Is there a way on this to redo this chart to have both data points, citizen voting age and total population by race and ethnicity? I think both of them are important pieces of information. So I know you would have to redo this chart. You couldn't do the colors in the same way. But I just think it would be more helpful to the public to see both data points on this.
We can work to try and see if the formatting can work to include the, it's a, there's a lot of information on the map, but I can look and see if I can try and
I mean, you can do it in a, you can do it in a graph as opposed to these colored bar.
Right.
I guess this is a bar chart. You don't have, I mean, the visual is nice, but I do think it could be more like, like where you have population by district. Maybe you do it in that format, so you have the percentages. I just think, I would like to see it. I think the public would like to see, I mean, because ultimately, we are redistricting based on total population. We're not redistricting based upon voting age population. So having the race and ethnicity by total population, I think, is important because we represent interest of children too, not just voting age. So I think, so it may mean we don't have colored bar charts. It may mean a different format, but we can leave it to all of you to figure that out. I just think both data points would be important to have for the public.
Yeah, we can do that.
And to that point, I think it would also be important for us to be able to see the CVAP. I'm calling it CVAP because I'm, you know, speaking the language. The citizen voting age population, I think it'd just be interesting as we're looking at that because if we're putting all the voters or a significant number of actual voting age in one district, that does create some issues. So I think it'd be good to be able to see all the numbers. And I agree with John, we want to have a, you know, an evenly distributed and consider all of the people in the population. But I do think we should be able to see those numbers as well, just because I think we should know how many voters. Candace has your, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I do have my hand up. But I just, one, I have, ever since I was in office, have sort of tracked registered voters by district just because, to me, it's really interesting when I'm speaking to a group to say, even though we're supposed to be divided evenly by population, this is how it breaks down. I think it's interesting and, but I, for this purpose, and this is where I want to better understand, you're not asking, John, are you, that this be part of the mapping tool that's accessible? It could make it really complex.
I'm saying that this chart, what I'm asking is that when they produce a map, that the map, this is apparently going to be the format of maps, right? They're going to do a map that shows boundaries and they're going to show all of this data. So I'm just asking that in addition to knowing the race and ethnicity of the citizen voting age population, that we know the race and ethnicity of the population in each of the districts in total, not just citizen voting age.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about the actual mapping tool. I don't know if you've played around with the mapping tools.
I have, yeah, I have.
And so I don't know if we, one, because it's not required for redistricting itself. It's something that I think is relevant. I think it's helpful to see. But I'm concerned if we ask District R to make that part of the mapping tool. One, I don't know that they have the capacity. But two, it makes much more, adds a different layer of complexity to maps being submitted by the public, even maps being submitted by our office. And so that's the question I'm trying to figure out.
I thought, race and, let me be clear, understanding race and ethnicity by district is important. I thought that is part of the mapping tool.
I'm not saying that, John, I'm talking about voters.
Christine?
Oh, no, no, look, can I be clear? Can I be clear? I have never, I, can I finish? I have not asked for registered voters here.
Okay, that's what I'm
What this says is citizen voting age population, which presumably means 18 and above.
Right.
All I'm saying is, let's have the data for everybody, not just 18 and above. Because even the citizen voting age isn't registered voters, right? Because a smaller percent of people are registered. I have not asked for registered voters on any of this.
But what I'm trying to even figure out from Christine, when I've been in the map, it doesn't show me a separate breakout for even citizen voting age population. It just shows, and so that's where I'm trying to figure out. Are you requesting that we try to get another layer added to the mapping tool? Okay, you're not, okay.
All I understand is that the mapping tool shows race and ethnicity by total population. And that's fine. It's just that then these charts that the DCD is producing happens to be showing an extra layer of data, which is citizen voting age, and then plus regular population, right?
Sure, interesting additional information, I agree.
Supervisors.
Go ahead.
Thank you, supervisors. The reason we presented in this format is it's specifically required that we show the citizen voting age population. So we can try to put together maps that shows the other data that you are asking for. But in our district, our mapping program, we would not be able to change that in order to do this.
Right.
All right. Okay, Christine, keep going.
Excellent. As we were just talking about, it's a great segue into the county's District R mapping program, which allows members of the public to draw proposals for communities of interest or supervisory districts to submit to the board for consideration. or supervisory districts to submit to the board for consideration. And they can also explain why a particular community of interest or a map is important to them. And you can access that information at coco-redistricting.org. We have lots of resources available to learn how to map, as well as the workshops, and then there's additional resources on the portal. I'm going to show some examples of what happens when we pull that information back into our GIS program to present to you. Here is a community of interest, and if you notice on the upper right-hand side, there's a submission number C-2632. That's the number that's in District R, in case anyone wants to go back and look at the official, the submission. And the name is the Northern Waterfront, and we know that the area in Byron is not part of the Northern Waterfront. That was erroneously included. And then a description from the submission. And this is the second community of interest that we have received, and it's in the city of Walnut Creek, wanting that whole area to be included in one district. It's currently split. This is a template for what for any submissions that come in that are full district submissions. You'll notice that all of the community submissions are green instead of blue, so you can really tell the difference of whether it's a community submission or a county submission. Again, on the top right-hand side, there's a community submission, number P for plan 4715, and this map name is Ron's District Map. A couple of things I'd like to point out about the community submissions. Oftentimes, members of the public are going to start in an area that's important to them, and that will be the first district. So it might not be District One as we think of District One as Supervisor Joyous District. It's just the first district that they drew. But we are keeping everything exactly as a community member has submitted it and not trying to interpret their intent, since we don't really know. Something else I would like to point out is right next to the legend, there's an unassigned population and an unassigned C-VAP. That is because District R, these are all little tiny blocks, and you can see right next to Las Vicaros Reservoir, there's kind of a gray spot that just happened to not be assigned. So we just wanted to make sure that when we do all the calculations, we use the numbers that have been assigned. This particular map has a 2.9% deviation, and then there's a written description of what's important, which, since that's very small, I can tell you that it's Diablo and Blackhawk should be part of just the Danville and San Ramon area. Here's Ron.
I I just to note, going back, I mean, people are going to put their own submission, and we respect that. And I I think it's important to note how people define a community of interest may or may not truly be communities of interest. And ultimately, I do find it interesting that they find that it keeps communities of interest together, but it splits Arinda and Lafayette, you know, off into different supervisory districts. So I mean, everyone's going to have their opinion, and and we respect that. And the job is to figure out how to keep as many communities of interest together.
And I'll be speaking to that. I'll be speaking to that later.
I know we're not commenting on individual maps, but I'm making a general, I'm using this as an example to make a general comment where it says it keeps communities of interest together, you know, and everyone, people are going to argue differently about, there's going to be many different arguments that, and ultimately, we're going to have to try to, you know, sort this all out. And and anyway.
Exactly. And so this is Ron's number two map, very similar, and you can see a theme in all the Ron maps that Diablo, Blackhawk area are part of the Danville-San Ramon area. This final map is a example of someone who submitted a partial districting plan, which is perfectly acceptable. And in this case, the areas one Diablo-Blackhawk should be included in District Two, and the area five, which is portions of Walnut Creek, should be moved to District Four. And in this case, we don't provide a variation or data for anything besides what's been submitted to the county through the District R app. And we also, of course, receive information that are written, but I'll turn it over to David to talk more about that.
Thank you, Christine. Basically, one other thing, in addition to the map submissions, both for communities of interest as well as for proposed supervisory districts, is also public comments get submitted. So we keep an official record of that and provide that to not only to the board, but also it becomes part of the record. Remember, one of the things that has to happen is that our official redistricting website has to be maintained, has to have all of this material in it, and it has to be maintained for 10 years following the board's adoption of this. So we want to make sure that we get all of the comments included in. In this case, it starts with one that we received on August 4th, as well as one on September 4th and September 17th. What we'll do is in each of the subsequent public hearings is include all of the data that's received to date, and again, make that part of the record. One thing to point out, and that is individuals who go to our official redistricting website, essentially, when they scroll down, one of the things that they will come to is what's called the submission gallery. And that includes all of the maps, all of the the community of interest proposals, as well as all of the public comments that were received online. You will note in the earlier one, we also receive comments by letters or by emails. And so we're trying to make sure that we catch all of these items and make them a part of the official record. But on the, as we get to look at this, you can see we even code these by, so you can tell the difference between what's a proposed map drawn for the supervisor district, what's a map drawn for a proposed community of interest, and then the speakerphone is essentially for those who have submitted comment. So it's a nice, easy way for people to look at what's been submitted. So if somebody, for example, looked at one of the maps that was drawn for consideration, and they they could simply click on it and comment if they wanted to, and as you can see at the bottom of each of those items, there is an area that shows if there have been additional public comments. So it's possible that somebody could look at that map and say, well, I'm not going to draw my own map. I'm just going to say, well, I think this map is good. Or they might say, I think this map is good but for one of two things. So it gives the public multiple access points to either submit their own designs as far as communities of interest or maps, or alternatively, to simply to comment on those that have been submitted to date. The other thing, of course, is we have attempted to do as much community public outreach as possible. We've essentially made sure that we're getting as many as we possibly can. Essentially, as we indicated, we've our outreach efforts include the press releases, public notices through CCTV, as well as the outreach that is the supervisors have done through their newsletters or through their contacts. So we're trying to make this as as broad as possible, and this is what we've received to date. So we do have people who asked, anybody who wanted to subscribe to our email messaging system, and that we would then push out the data as far as not only just the hearing dates, but every data that we have available. So right now, we have 254 subscribers to that. But if you look at in terms of the dedicated redistricting website reviews, as well as the Twitter and Nextdoor posts, those numbers are over 70,000 to date. And so there is, as part of the public hearing board order that's attached to the this, there's attachment B, which is the complete redistricting communications report that provides the same detail, but in much more greater detail. So as I indicated, we have this December 15th deadline that has not changed. The California Supreme Court did extend the time for the California Redistricting Commission to complete its work to December 27th. But again, that only deals with the state redistricting, not the county redistricting. SB 594 that was signed by the governor on September 27th, this is, as I said, we did nine versions of the PowerPoint, trying to correct everything we possibly could, and still missed this one. So the governor signed the bill on September 27th. This is a bill that adjusts the state deadlines to those later dates, but none of the actions taken to date have extended the statutory deadline for us. It did, in terms of what the governor signed, has made it a little easier for Debbie Cooper, our clerk recorder, gives her a little more time in terms of dealing with the signature in lieu of filing petitions. So that's available now seven days after the redistricting deadline, or first week of January, and the number of required signatures will be reduced in a proportionate reduction for the signature collection period. So that'll help her as well as potential candidates who are filing for any of the offices. With that, it completes the information that we did want to provide for you today, so we were more than happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, David. Thank you, Christine. Looking at my colleagues, I don't see any hands raised. So David, I would like to make sure that we are letting people know how they can sign up for the mail list. So that would be going on to the website, correct?
Yes, they they can do it on the website. They can also contact the clerk's office. We did, and they can also collect or contact our public relations officer. I did get an email, for example, last Friday by somebody saying, how do I participate? And how do I get on the mailing list? And we simply added them then to the subscribers list.
Okay, so they could do a search for what is redistricting, coco-redistricting, that, you know, what is our website?
Our website is www.co.co-redistricting.
It's coco, www.coco-redistricting.org.
I keep wanting to.
Okay, there you go.
Starchros in there.
All right, so so we can share that in our outreach. The other thing is, we were talking about the additional meeting on November 23rd. Part of that, by doing that, allows us to go all the way as long as we can, getting as much public input. Isn't that correct?
That is correct. It's also one of the things that, even though, again, we're now allowed to do the mapping a little earlier than we had anticipated, there are some very specific timelines under the Fair Maps Act that are different than our usual posting requirements. So for example, we have to post any maps at least five days before any hearing, and for a final map before the board can consider a final map, that has to be posted for seven days. So that really extends the timeline because, for example, you know, at one point in two, you may remember in 2011, we actually did back-to-back hearings in terms of consecutive Tuesday board meetings. It really becomes very difficult to do that now, given the specific timelines, because, for example, if you decided at one pub of one board meeting that you wanted a final map, we couldn't possibly get that posted in time to have a the next board meeting the following Tuesday. So as complicated as it is, we're trying to comply with all of the statutory requirements and give the public as much access to the process as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because, you know, we're talking about the process and, you know, getting our public meetings and really by doing, taking the approach that we're doing, we're actually expanding the public input time as much as we can and then still meeting those needs. The last comment I had just before we go to public comments is that the county is going through their process right now, but so is the state and the federal. And then you'll see some cities and special districts, and they're all separate efforts. And so this that we're talking about is specifically related to the county. So if my colleagues have no other comments or questions, I'm going to take this to public comment. I'll ask Jamie to take it away.
If there are any callers on the line.
Excuse me, we need to open the public hearing.
I did at the very beginning.
Thank you.
If there are any callers on the line or any Zoom participants that would like to speak on the 2021 redistricting process, please press either pound two if you're on the phone or raise your hand in the app. We have both a caller and Zoom participants, and we will take the caller first.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right, moving on to our caller in queue. And caller, please state your name. You have two minutes to state your comment.
Yeah, hi, my name is John. I live in Danville. You know, I listened to the whole redistricting thing. I think, you know, you guys have a lot of work on your plate, and and I appreciate what you're doing. I just want to make one comment about the gentleman that continued to ask for race and ethnicity in terms of the demographics. Now, I really don't think that we got a good enough answer out of why that was important other than the fact that, you know, maybe wants to keep them together in the same in the same district in terms of, you know, to keep their their thought processes the same. I think it's divisive. I think the message in our community needs to be, you know, you guys don't, you guys base it on what you base it on. But I don't think race and ethnicity is the right way to go, because that will create a little division within our community. I think that a broader, how to put it, consensus is a better idea. I think once you bring race and race and ethnicity into this, we've created division. I think it's somewhat discriminatory, and that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other callers, so we can move to the Zoom participants.
Terrific. All righty, so we have two people with their hands raised. And so what I'm going to let you know is you, when it's your turn, you'll get an invitation to join as a panelist. You accept that invitation, and then you'll be moved over. We'll ask you to unmute yourself, and if you'd like to share your video, you can. It looks like one person has taken their hand down, so we're going to invite Jane Corant to join us, and so you're going to get an invitation to join. And then, oh, wait.
Yep, actually, Sherbergis. I believe Michelle already got promoted.
Oh, okay, so where is Michelle? Okay, so Michelle, are you with us?
You're muted.
Okay, hi, can you hear me now?
There you go. Welcome.
All right, thank you. Let's see, I'll lower my hand. I wanted to speak and say that my family members and neighbors are residents of the Camino Tassahara and a incorporated portion of Contra Costa County. And I'm speaking for myself and on their behalf to request that the redistricting of the Contra Costa County keep this area together as a community of interest with the town of Danville and the city of San Ramon and Alamo, Blackhawk, Diablo, Camino Tassahara, or the Tassahara Valley area and the La Merinda area. These communities are geographically contiguous and share common concerns and a really strong sense of community. And in particular, my community with the vicinity of Camino Tassahara has an economic tie to San Ramon and to the town of Danville, and they share the same school district. They share the same, which is a San Ramon Valley Unified School District, and the same emergency services like the San Ramon Valley Fire Protection District and hospitals, parks, similar municipal service providers and agencies and civic organizations and veteran service organizations, several of which we support and we volunteer and we invest in, and we're actively involved. And also the social groups and sports clubs in which we participate regularly. And these areas also have in common a particular section of Interstate 680 and similar avenues of transit. And many of my neighbors in my HOA neighborhood of 477 homes share my interest in remaining in the same community of interest and being in the same supervisory district. And our current district boundaries, which is District Three, do not allow us to be part of the same communities, which I mentioned, namely the town of Danville, city of San Ramon, Alamo, Blackhawk, Diablo, et cetera, and Camino Tassahara is which where I live area, and then also the La Merinda area, which were. area, and then also the La Mirinda area, which we're actively involved in. So where these are both closely done.
Thank you, Michelle. There is a time limit on our speaking. So our next public speaker is Jane Corrent. Please accept the invitation to become a public speaker and then unmute yourself. And if you'd like to share your video, there you are. Welcome.
You're muted.
You're muted still.
I am. Hi, I'm sorry. I'm kind of new to this redistricting process. Went to a couple of really good presentations to understand some of it and learn a little bit about all the mapping tools and so forth. So my comment's really very brief. One thing that I did note in looking at some of the maps, that the city of Antioch seems to have part of it divided, so that some of it is, I guess, in District Three. I'm getting the district numbers mixed up. But I guess I'd just like to say, it would seem to me, Antioch is a city that's seeing a lot of population growth, and it probably would be a good idea to keep it in one supervisory district. That's really all I have to say today, because I'm still learning. So I'm glad that it's an ongoing process and that there'll be other opportunities for hearings. And I guess I just, my representative from District One, John Joya, I thought made some interesting points. Hello, John. That there are communities, racial communities, if we want to use that term, that have built some kinds of history and legacy together and dividing them up and not considering them as an important community of interest along with all the other, all the other factors. I don't really see that as discriminatory so much as just keeping communities whole. So I appreciate, I appreciate that consideration. And good luck. You've got a lot of work to do. So I look forward to seeing the process unfold. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Our next public speaker is Addie. Addie, you're going to get an invitation to join. And then as soon as you accept it, you'll be moved over. I'm going to ask Angela, did she come over?
Yes, so Addie is on here and unmuted already.
Hello, supervisor. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you for taking my moment to speak, allowing this opportunity. Adi Olvera and I live in Karen Michelle's district, and I just wanted to briefly talk about how important this redistricting process means to myself and our community. Living in Concord, I would really love to keep Concord whole. And keep it in mind that Concord is going to be going through a huge master, I mean, naval weapons station development process. I think it's important to have in mind everything that's going on from one side of our town, including that area, all the way to the other side of our town. We have similarities of neighboring cities as well. But the important characteristics of our, of Concord is that we're very diverse. Over half of our population are people of color, a little over half. And it's important that we keep those communities together, so we can, we could have one representative to speak to about our unique city and keep our voices together based on the needs that we have and how we want to continue to grow as a district. Other things that are important is that we have major BART stops here in Concord that bridge us to other communities like Walnut Creek and Pleasant Hill and to Bay Point. So I just wanted to give that to you to keep in mind. Hopefully you'll keep our city whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Addie. Looks like that was our last public comment on this item. So I'm going to take this back to my colleagues. I do have a question to Mr. Twah. There was a couple of comments about not wanting cities divided. Can you talk about why and how, I mean, are currently Antioch and Walnut Creek are split up? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, currently it's Penole as well as Walnut Creek and Antioch are the three that are split at the present time. Again, a couple of things happened, one of which is, as some of you have already talked about, communities of interest are significantly important to all of us and as well as to, obviously, to all of the residents. So sometimes, if you look at communities of interest, they would look quite different as opposed to the city's boundaries. And so, as some of the speakers have mentioned in terms of talking about, for example, school districts being a community of interest and people who are going to the same school districts, even though they may be in more than one particular city, that's critical to those areas. So you have that reason. You also have just the geographical issues, as I indicated. We have a very large mountain that sits right in the middle of the county. And so if you look at how people participate in activities as well as participate in government, it is somewhat dependent upon their ability to get from one area to another. And so oftentimes, you have that. And finally, we have some very large cities. Antioch is quite large. You have the central area in terms of Concord, Pleasant Hill, and Walnut Creek. And if you look at trying to come up with a number that falls within that 10% deviation, sometimes it's extremely difficult to do that without having some of the cities split. So those are all factors that the board has to take into consideration as you look at both the, trying to keep communities whole, but communities whole means more than simply the boundaries of a particular city. It can be these, all these various communities of interest that we talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Twah. So I have Supervisor Anderson, Supervisor Joya, and Supervisor Glover. So we're going to start with Supervisor Anderson. Oh, and then Supervisor Mitch after, sorry.
We all have lots to say. No, and I really appreciate the comments we've received, both those who spoke today as well as those who have been submitting comments, submitting maps. It's a lot of work when you get down there, working in District R to start mapping areas. And so I appreciate those who are taking the time to come up with this. I really do too appreciate the diversity of each of our districts. And I think what we saw today is that we each have a very diverse district, and some with one greater racial population, others with others. And that does represent communities of interest in many, many cases, having this diversity in each of our communities. And I think there's great, great value in keeping that, those communities of interest together. And so the two things that I'm really hearing about my district is, one, to really keep La Mirinda whole. And John alluded to that when we saw one of the proposed maps, that the cities of Lafayette, Aranda, and Maraga, while each of them have their very own distinct needs, community, city council, they also work very closely together on many issues, whether it be their transportation issues, and they have their own school bus program to relieve traffic among the school sites. They have overlaps in some of their school districts, their fire, evacuation, CERT. They have their joint Tri Valleys, Tri, not Tri Valley, Tri City Council meetings. To me, it's really important that wherever they end up, they stay there together. I really hope they remain in my district, simply because they really are great individuals that I'd love to continue to represent. And then the other one is the one that we've heard a lot of today, is just the importance of bringing in Black Hawk, Diablo, the Tassahara Valley, unincorporated Danville, to be brought into the same district as Danville and San Ramon. And I will say, 10 years ago, when I was on Danville's Town Council, and suddenly I saw that Black Hawk and Diablo, the Tassahara Valley, were going to be in a different district, it was really surprising as an elected official that that had happened, simply because 94506, which is my zip code, happens to be the same zip code as Black Hawk and unincorporated Danville. And I think a lot of people know, when you buy a house, a lot of people have no idea whether they're buying into incorporated community or unincorporated. And so those communities, Black Hawk, Diablo, and unincorporated Danville, including the Tassahara Valley, all are part of the same San Ramon Valley Unified School District. They are part of the same sports, youth activities, scouting groups, churches. I cannot think of a more specialized community of interest in that sense, not a racial community of interest, but just everyone in those communities are very much intertwined. And so I would love to see that happen. And then the last thing I was going to say, wasn't one of my main two points, was the city of Walnut Creek. And Karen and I have had the privilege of representing Walnut Creek, and we did get the letter from the Chamber of Commerce expressing their desire to have one supervisor representing the downtown. Yesterday, as we honored Steve Weir at his building, I was talking to Cindy Silva, a council member of Walnut Creek. And I mentioned that we'll be having a hearing today, talking about redistricting and the, what I'd heard from the chamber, and she said, well, actually, I really liked having two supervisors in Walnut Creek. It's been very helpful. You and Karen have been right there for us when we've had an issue that we needed to have addressed. And so while I think it's beneficial to keep cities together, and I think that's my primary objective, I will say that there are some elected officials who also see a value in having two supervisors representing the city. And I think that's something that will be open for discussion. I also think it is useful to have unincorporated communities within a sphere of a city, stay within the same district as that city. And we did have one comment of unincorporated Lafayette that is currently in Federal's District, District Five, and while they love Federal and his office, they just felt that it would make more sense for them to be as the same district as Lafayette. I see that value, and just because, again, more often than not, they are part of the same community of interest with schools and other things. So my goal, David, if I'm giving you direction in my perfect map, and my staff is working on our perfect map of what we think it should look like, which we will at the right time submit, once we're ready, and once it's the appropriate timing, is I really would like to keep the entire San Ramon Valley in my district. I would love to keep all La Mirinda in my district, and Walnut Creek will be the, sort of the interesting buffer area, if it's possible to put them in one district. I think there is some strong support of it, but as I heard from Councilmember Silva, if I have the privilege of continuing to represent part of Walnut Creek, I'm very happy to do so. I think our districts have worked really well, and I would not be pushing for a big sea change, but those are my preferences, and that's what I'm hearing when I'm out in the community.
Thank you, Supervisor Anderson. We'll go on to Supervisor Joya.
Thanks. I'll first start by making a few general comments and then maybe make some specific comments. And I'll start by saying, I think the good news is, unlike 2010, the foundation and base of our map is generally a pretty good one. And I think, so it's really more about how do we improve it and keeping communities of interest together. I don't think we're going to need to see big changes. And in a way, if you think about it, we've got a West County district, we have an industrial waterfront, we have East County, we have the La Mirinda-San Ramon Valley, and we have sort of a core Central County, which I think a lot of people agree, those are major sort of subregional parts of our county that all make sense. And we're, of course, we're impacted by trying to keep them within plus or minus 5% of each other and balancing communities of interest. And other, my colleagues have talked about some of those communities of interest, and I'll talk about them from a county-wide perspective, not just my own district. And clearly, I mean, one caller says it's discriminatory to include race and ethnicity. It actually isn't. It's allowed under the law. In fact, in fact, race and ethnicity is a community of interest. And unfortunately, there are some around the country, hasn't happened, well, at least not in Contra Costa, where, you know, redistricting's been done to split up the power of racial and ethnic groups and have all sorts of contorted boundaries to make that happen. We don't do that here. So, you know, we have a county which is diverse, and that diversity is often spread out around the county, although more so in some supervisory districts than others. So that is a factor. And David, you even said that the voting age, citizens by voting age showing raciness and ethnicity is something that we have to show on there, correct, on there? So I think, just to put it out there, it is an important piece of information. We are going to show it. So, and getting to the issue of cities, it is clearly, you know, we try not to split cities, but sometimes in the balance of achieving the plus or minus 5% with communities of, with keeping communities of interest together, larger cities sometimes have to be split. I think smaller cities are easier to clearly keep whole. In fact, looking at our neighboring counties, in Solano County, Vallejo is, city of Vallejo is split between more than, I think, two supervisory districts. In Marin, San Rafael is split. In Sonoma, Santa Rosa is split. So, and what I, what some of those larger cities will say is, if you're going to do that, then maybe keep neighborhoods within the city together. Like in the example of Walnut Creek, if Walnut Creek has to be split, then maybe you keep the downtown together, for example. In fact, there are some elected officials and residents in those communities who say, I like being represented by two supervisors, as Cindy Silva pointed out to Candace Anderson. It gives you greater representation on the board. So there's no right or wrong answer there. It's not bad to split a city if you have to, and you do it logically and where it makes sense. So saying all of those, I'll talk about sort of what I see as communities of interest around the county. I agree with Candace. I think, you know, La Mirinda is a community of interest that we try to keep together. The San Ramon Valley is a community of interest, including the Tassahara Valley. And a little history, the only reason, because Federal and I were around on the 2010 redistricting, the only reason Tassahara Valley is in Candace's district is because, to get within the plus or minus 5%, because that population was needed in that district, and it would have been too much in what is Diane's district. There were different supervisors there. Because I think the board tried to keep Tassahara, I mean, it was a population issue. Tried to keep Tassahara Valley in the San Ramon Valley, but it would have made, it would have changed the numbers, they would no longer have been within what was legally allowed. That's the only reason. So yes, I think fixing that makes a lot of sense and putting it back in the valley. And if you look at our boundaries, I mean, we have a west and an east part of the county. In a way, the west part, which is a community of interest, you move east on I-80 as much as you can until you reach your population limit. And I think this time around, it hopefully will allow Penole to all be in one supervisory district. And again, the only reason it was split last time was to make the population numbers work in Supervisor Glover's district. So there's only one place you can go, is east. Same with East County and Diane's district. Got a great community of interest in Far East County and East County, and it moves west on Highway Four, and you go as far west as you can, given the population numbers. And that's why Diane's district has not quite all of Antioch. What the numbers will be, we'll, you know, we'll see. Maybe she gets all of Antioch, maybe not, but there's only so far she can go west, given the population numbers. So I think the core of, starting with East County, we have an East County community of interest that goes west as far as it needs to go. We have a West County community of interest that goes east as far as it can go. We have an industrial waterfront whose boundaries are adjusted based on community of interest population. We have San Ramon Valley, La Mirinda. And then that core of Central County and Karen's district of Pleasant Hill, Concord, part of Walnut Creek, Clay, you know, what is that? What are the adjustments there? So I'm starting off with this idea, we have a good foundation, we don't need a lot of big changes, we need adjustments at the boundaries to fix these issues. I do think keeping, where we can keep school districts together is, can be a good thing. There's a lot of work we do with school districts. I know, for example, in my area, West Contra Costa Unified School District, which covers Penole and a little part of Hercules, is a community of interest. So that's sort of my take on how we, how we look at that, and I'll hear other supervisors for their view in their areas as well.
Thank you, Supervisor Joya. Supervisor Glover?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that this is really an interesting topic, and everyone that serves on board as supervisor should have an opportunity to go through redistricting because it is pretty. to go through redistricting, because it is pretty, pretty amazing when you look at things. But I do want to say that when you talk about race, race and ethnicity, I think that's important to, to, to show, because that's the only African American, only person of color to have served on, on board a supervisor in the county's history, has been myself. So it's good to be able to look at population and where that goes. What, one thing that, that you can view is that there's not enough African Americans to say that, that African Americans can control that vote. So it has to be a, a big vote of the people at large to make that happen. But I think it is good to, to point out where the, the growth is and what areas of representation they come from when we look at, you know, the racial balances within the county as a large. I think this is just good information for people to have, as well as when we are looking at districts. What are the, the communities of, of interest and how they run together? And that's why I fought for District Five and looking at the Northern Waterfront Initiative that was put in place, because we, we had opportunities there for community of interest to see that there was major job opportunities along our northern waterfront. It's holds all the refineries, all but one, within that area. And certainly, a great need for economic growth existed along there. So I think as much information as we could get out for not only policymakers, but our public in general, to be able to, you know, do their own analysis in terms of what really are the clear communities of, of, of interest. And at the same time, be able to understand from a racial standpoint the, the various impacts that that have, as well as communities that has been hard hit with a number of disparities that, that take place. It gives us a great opportunity to look at where we need to be doing more work. And certainly, in terms of what are needed in the particular communities, because I think that people that are elected to office up in whatever district, they would want to be very clear on what the greatest needs are for those communities and work very hard to try to make those necessary changes so that our county as a whole could look very much represented by all supervisors understanding the need. So I, I think that we do have a good foundation that we could work from, and I'm looking forward to all the interesting maps that will come in. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Glover. Supervisor Mitcha?
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to follow up on the concept of split districts. I've either worked in and or represented this fourth district for thirty-plus years. And in all that time, District Four has always had split communities. I know in the 2010, we expanded that further to accommodate what my colleagues have said in the cities of Antioch and Panol. I sometimes hear from elected officials in some of those communities that they feel this is disrespectful to their city. And I, I want to assure people that, as has been stated before, a city that ends up being split, it, it's not because we're being disrespectful or think less of the, the citizens in that community. It's a matter of, of numbers. And again, going back to my history with District Four, there's never been a problem representing a split community. And as Supervisor Anderson said, she and I share with great honor and privilege the city of Walnut Creek. I know Supervisor Burgess and Supervisor Glover have the same relationship with Antioch and Supervisor Joya, and Supervisor Glover with the city of Panol. And at this point, ten years on, I, I've never heard a criticism of, of the representation and, and, and actually having two people represent them. What I always tell the cities that I represent, we are in the middle of the county. And if you are dividing the county, as I, I think of it as a pie, and trying to give everybody an equal share, where that, and I'm forgetting my geometric terms, but where the pie meets at the center, that's District Four. And I, you know, we'll, we'll look forward to the numbers, we'll look forward to the maps. But as I've told, I believe every member of the city council in Concord, Concord may be able to remain whole, but if not, you know, it, it's the largest city in the county, and it takes great pride in the fact that it's the largest city in the county by population. And at some point, Concord will be divided, especially as Concord Naval Weapons Station is developed. Right now, there aren't any people living there. So even if that were brought in, and it could be, because we want to look at, again, at those communities of concern and, and communities that have shared interests. But I just wanted to put out there, as we move forward, that, that this board means no disrespect, and it is not disrespectful to any city if they end up being split. Thank you. And, and when Candace mentioned her conversation with Councilwoman Silva, I was standing there too, and, and she agreed that she has, she and her colleagues have enjoyed having two representatives on the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Mitcha. Supervisor Glover, your hand is still raised. Do you want, did you have one more thing to say, or you just need to take your hand down?
I didn't have anything else to say, but now that you've asked, I, I will just, after listening to Karen and Candace in terms of split communities, one of the things I've heard from Panol is that they would like to stay as one community. And they really didn't, didn't care whether it was me or John, because they, they feel that both of us has represented them well. This is from the elected officials. And so I, I guess it's just one of those things in terms of, if, if you're out there and you're getting it done, and you're representing your portion, that that's what's most important to most community members, that they're not being neglected. So.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor Glover. So please put your hand down, that way I can move my screens around. Okay, so my comments. First of all, I think this is a very interesting process to go through. Just similar to census, we really get to kind of know who Contra Costa is and celebrate the diversity and look at our, what, who we are, what we are, where we are. So I am really interesting, interested in making this logical and fair. And that's what I've told folks that have reached out to me. I think the other thing to remind people is that we have a significant population in the unincorporated areas. So when we're looking at our mapping, we have to look at all the numbers as we've been talking about. And so in my particular area, we have a large number of unincorporated areas. And so that number, you can't move that around. That's the starting place. And then we move, as I think it was John was saying, moving west, moving east, you know, all of that. When I spoke to folks from the city of Antioch, for the most part, everybody said, you know, it, it, you know, they have two supervisors. And the nice thing about having two supervisors is we usually have different expertise, different ways of doing things. And so you get the benefit of two supervisors. So I am not that concerned about the division of cities, but I will, you know, consider that. I do believe in my communities that Camino Tassahara, Diablo, and Blackhawk belong next to work, you know, being in the same district as San Ramon and Danville. It's just logical, and it's fair. It's where they shop, it's where they go to school, it's, it's, it, it makes sense. So I will be supporting that. I also believe Morgan Territory should be a part of Clayton, because that's where they identify, that's where they go to school, that's where they shop. So I'll be looking at that. Brentwood and Oakley were the top two fastest-growing cities in Contra Costa County, and Antioch was the fifth. So I expect that my district will grow in the next ten years as well. So we'll be looking at the, the maps and trying to make it as fair and logical as possible. Related to the waterfront, I am interested in having part of the waterfront. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I think we all can play a part in this really important thing that Supervisor Glover's brought together. And, you know, we have two airports, and we've had a lot of growth in the airports. And I think that if we are all working together, there is a benefit that we all can bring more jobs to Contra Costa, and that's very important. So those are the things that I, those are my comments. Do we have anything else that you guys would like to add?
Yeah, one, this, I think it's a question of how many broad maps we want to have staff present to us as well. And, and I don't know, I mean, I, you know, I think, hearing all of this, I, I don't think, David, you need to present more than five maps. I mean, and so just in showing, I'm, I'm in that round number. I'm just saying, I mean, it's like, because I mean, we may get maps submitted by the public as well, obviously. And so, so just to note that.
Mr. Twa, did you want to add anything or comment?
Madam Chair, I, no, no, I think this has been a very good discussion. It has given us the direction that we need. So we will be in the process of preparing some maps that will be presented at the next public hearing, which will be on October nineteenth. Again, that is a six fifteen meeting. And the, the subsequent week will, of course, be the individual supervisory workshops. So hopefully, we'll have plenty of opportunity for the public to be involved, as well as to comment on not only the maps that we've drawn, but also maps that have been submitted by the public.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to close the public hearing.
Diane, I had one other comment. One, I, I just wanted to make an observation. Like, I do think, you know, it is easier. I mean, I've been involved as a supervisor in the redistricting for 2010 and now this year. And then as a staff person for a supervisor, I was involved in nineteen eighty. And so I, I've seen, right, boundaries change. And obviously, population shift greater out in East County and at one time in the San Ramon Valley. I, I think the heaviest, the biggest shift that happened in, in 2010, which was the right shift, was going to this current structure. Because remember, Candace, your district, when it was Supervisor Alkma, had this weird shape. It had part of West County, it had Martinez. It went down through La, the, the Alhambra Valley into La Marinda. So it had three different, had La Marinda, Martinez, and then Panol, Hercules, Rodeo, Crockett. It was a weird district, right? And so that, that took a lot to change all. And then, and then, and then Diane's district went, you know, went from Walnut Creek, San Ramon Valley, out to, out to, you know, whatever, Brentwood and Discovery Bay. So I think, you know, we've made huge, huge progress in shifting that. I don't know how that boundary, what, I forgot the history of how that was drawn. But it's, so I, so I just want to emphasize, I think, this is, I think, a, a, an easier task this ye, this year, because we have a good foundation. And so far, what I've, I've observed, and all the ones I've been involved with, there's, there's, I think, less political wrangling and, and, and conflict on, on this one. So that's my, after watching eighty, you know, you know, this is my fourth one. So this is, and this one, it seems to be a, a little more, a less, less political conflict.
Super. All right. So I've closed the public hearing. There is a request that we accept the report and give direction. I think we've done that. So I'm going to ask Jamie to do a roll call on this item.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three?
Yes, thank you. And that was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Twa, and welcome back to California.
Miss, Madam Chair, I'm looking at the agenda, and it says it's a hearing and to provide direction. What were we voting on?
Accepting the report from David Twa.
All right, thank you.
So who was the motion and who was the second?
I, I'll make myself the mover. I don't think we had a mover. I was going to ask you about that. Recompratably, let's make me the mover and someone else could be the second.
Thank you Supervisor Anderson for making the motion. My apologies, Ms. Mason. Did I get a second?
I thought John made the second.
Okay.
But I'll take it.
I say, is that, who talked the most? Is that kind of how we're basing it up? And I think John gets the first, if we're taking that.
Whatever, I'll make a motion or second if you, others.
I'm the first, you're the second, or Federal is, I don't care. I'm just teasing you, John.
Oh, okay. So I have a motion from Supervisor Anderson and a second from Supervisor Glover. And do we need to redo the roll call vote?
Technically, I don't think you need to redo the roll call vote, because we didn't actually have to vote to accept the report at all. So I think.